Here, that's scary.
I wanted to give you friendly.
Nice to see you. What are you doing here? Yes, you are because you're in charge of that church on Eighty-third Street. So, good evening. We're starting on time and I appreciate everyone who's here. I'm Gail Brewer, Manhattan Borough President, Matthew Dunbar from Habitat for Humanity, and Tara's here because of her amazing expertise in land use and all of the staff, Orlando, people who have put a lot of time in, and I really appreciate all of you making the time. Ever since I was in the City Council, I think you've heard me say this before, we had this challenge of what to do about faith-based, whose mission is important, and who often have buildings that are beautiful and have leaks in the roof and cost a fortune in order to repair. And we've had developers understandably be very focused on a big map stating, "We will get you a mission on the first floor and then tear down the building." And, you know, it's a challenge to figure out how to do both. It's no easy answer to this question of our city with a lot of beautiful buildings, a lot of wonderful congregants who have a really specific mission and do an awful lot of good for the community. And we're stuck in this wanting everything and not able to do everything. So, for your input today is incredibly important. The community boards deal with it. We sit here with many land use requests as a result. We're obviously talking about many of the buildings that are not landmarked. I know when I have friends who are faith-based leaders and I mention the word landmark, they might as well take a dartboard and throw it at me because it's the worst word. I have many friends in the faith-based world. I never discuss this topic with them, so I won't let you know. I might do it here, but not at dinner, ever, 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 and not at Fairway, ever, 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 which is where I do all my business. I get a lot done at Fairway. So, you know, I think you can, particularly in Community District Ten, there are lots and lots of faith-based and a lot of them are not landmarked. So, I think there are lots of numbers. I'm not going to go through them, but I want to just say that we want to be helpful. The whole purpose of the task force meetings and the discussion today is to develop understanding of the issues that the institutions face and see if we could come up with strategies. Sometimes we are looking at the issue of air rights. Some of you've been part of another task force that's been trying to see if the air rights could be sold beyond, across the street or next door, which is usually the only place where they can be sold. And then, mission can maybe be understood and continued, building can be continued, and the only problem is where do those air rights end up? They could end up in another neighborhood and then you have people upset with that particular situation. This is not an easy policy issue to end up with a solution, but that's why we're here. If it was easy, we would not be here. So, thank you very much. I don't mind turning it over to you, Matthew.
Sure.
To say that this is, but really from the bottom of my heart, I appreciate you taking the time to be here tonight. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Gail. So, thank you to everybody who is here tonight and for those that are live streaming. We also want to encourage folks, if you weren't able to be here tonight, to email in. We'll have an email address available through the website. You can submit comments and thoughts that way as well. This is the first of two public meetings and a continuation of the ongoing stakeholder engagement that we are currently conducting. We are engaging on various issues facing religious facilities in the borough. So, we're looking at areas of legal rights and options. We're looking at development. We're looking at affordable housing. We're looking at alternative sources of revenue, and ultimately, we would love to see some policy recommendations come out of this process. As, you know, the Borough President mentioned, this is an issue that has so many emotions attached to it because we are all human. We have connections to our spaces. There are spiritual, theological, historical, community-based emotions that are created in us when we think about our religious facilities. And everybody that is here today, everybody that is engaging with this process comes from different perspectives. So, this is a great opportunity for us to be able to hear from the public, hear some of your stories, hear some of your thoughts, some of your motivations, and some of your recommendations so that we can take them with us as we move forward in investigating this issue. So, thank you, everyone, for being here. The process, you know, is no presentation. We would just love to hear from the public. So, I have, I'll be keeping tabs. We're looking for comments of no more than three minutes. So, if people could, if you're interested in speaking, we ask that folks come up in an orderly way up to the mic and, okay, we prefer that folks sign up in the rear. Do you want to speak about the process at all or?
So, if you haven't yet and you would like to speak, we are requesting that you sign up in the back and then we will call out your name in the order in which you receive and you can, you'll have three minutes for your testimony.
Also, if you go a little over, it's okay. Danny Best, Liberty Church, please join us. And after that, Dr. Elisa F. Isaacs. All right, how are you?
How you guys doing? My name is Danny Best. I'm a pastor of a church up on the Upper West Side. I, not to further complicate an already complicated issue, but I represent a contingent of people in faith communities that have the opposite problem here in that finding buildings to rent when we don't own a building. There's a lot of people, I have some friends in the room that have been pastors and church planters here in the city that love our faith communities and love our neighborhoods and want to invest and be in our neighborhoods and find it very challenging sometimes to find space even to rent. There's, a lot of us exist in kind of a middle space that needs a space bigger than 100 seats, but smaller than 300 seats for a lot of us. And there's a lot of very large theaters in this city that you may have noticed. Those are not exactly accessible for most of us. But finding, I think there's over 200 churches that meet in schools around New York City. Schools have been a great place for a lot of churches to meet, although they're a bit of a unicorn. They're hard to get into. They're hard to make connections to the head custodian, perhaps, who is the main gatekeeper in most of those locations. Difficult to break into the, some of those places because it's hard, because of the way the rules are set up, to actually make a value add to the school that matters. It's hard to start a relationship and make an investment in a school because the custodian is the person that actually would say yea or nay to whether or not you're going to be there. Very economical, but it's a challenging thing. So, we have a lot of, a lot of people, a lot of churches that are trying to come into Manhattan and be a part of the landscape here, the cultural landscape, and represent a bunch of people that are having a hard time finding space in a lot of places.
I have a question though.
Sure.
What would you suggest would be helpful? Because I must admit, I prefer that you're not in a school. I'm talking as Gail Brewer now.
Yeah.
So, what would be helpful, do you think, for the policy recommendations for how the continuation of a dialogue about those who are looking versus those who have space? How would that be able to be instigated, do you think? People who have faith-based space.
Sure. Well, faith-based space, the challenge is, most communities actually have something going on in their buildings. So, finding a way to, part of it is a, is a church, like, methodology problem. Most of us all want to meet at the same time. So, that makes kind of a limited use thing. So, some of it has to do with church practice and finding alternative methods and ways in which we can utilize each other's spaces. One of the things that for churches has been, an interesting idea is synagogues are often closed on Sundays where churches want to meet. And so, finding some reciprocity there. Not every synagogue wants a church in their space, which I totally understand.
Yep.
Obviously, there's a lot, like, we rent space from a movie theater. That's a commercial space. So, but I think that some, there's, I know that there's a lot of churches that are closing. There's, you know, that are owned by large dioceses and things like that. And you could probably get a group of churches to come together, partner together, to be in a space and take over a space that maybe one of them certainly couldn't own on their own, but collectively could potentially do some good.
St. Gregory's is available on Ninetieth Street. I assume you know that.
I do not. I do now.
I'll take a fee if you get it.
Okay. Thank you.
Go ahead. You're next. You're next. And after that is Madame Camp, Chair of Community Board Eight.
Good evening, Gail, and thank you. I took a little bit different point. It's the notice I got. It was called preserving religious buildings. So, in the fact of history, a significant statement of value to the city, we're observing centuries of history, you find in most institutions or religion here in New York City. Some may have landmark status or not, and to the financial and social value that adds to the community certainly makes them worth preserving and potentially does make them eligible for financial support should they need it. Religious services form cohesive bonds among many community members. Both with interfaith and intrafaith congregations, religious institutions offer political base upon which various voices and community members, excuse me, can outreach and respond to neighborhood needs and services. Now, one thing that was interesting to me and brought to me by a member of the clergy from New York City is the potential that the building value and their space needs. Many religious buildings do have extra space that is not used throughout all the hours of the week. This is in Manhattan and indeed throughout all of New York City. They're valuable for low or even no-cost rental and lease to city agencies, which was particularly highlighted to me by this particular clergy member, as well as rental and lease by community and neighborhood-based, not-for-profit organizations.
Thank you very much, Madame Camp. Okay. And then Martin Heinstoff.
Thank you very much for hearing my testimony. My name is Alita Camp, and as you pointed out, I'm Chair of CBA Eight. And I'm here because this is a problem that we all recognize, and I don't know what the solution is. Normally, I have a lot of opinions, but my only opinion here is that something needs to be done to preserve the churches and the surrounding communities. We're well concerned in CBA Eight with towers that are going up and the increased congestion and density without any benefit to the community. Churches should be encouraged to provide affordable housing space if they're going to develop at all. But there seems to be an issue for not-for-profits participating in basically a profit-making enterprise if they're selling off condos that start based on the article in the New York Times at million, at least $600,000, going up into the millions for an apartment. There seems to be just something off about that. While not-for-profits should be able to capture some of what's going on in New York, it would seem that there's a responsibility to the community not to cause increased gentrification, not to cause increased prices that may well drive out the congregations that the churches are there for, are there in that neighborhood for. So, it seems that maybe some of them should be landmarked, but when there is an administration that doesn't necessarily believe in that landmarking spaces and providing help to the very institutions that make up the heart of New York, that I don't know that we're going to get a whole lot of help there. Or maybe even special rules for churches and synagogues. But there are a lot of them in the area of CBA Eight, which is the Upper East Side, that we're really concerned about selling off and building these towers and, again, increasing all of that. So, while we would very much like to see affordable housing, we believe that that's churches' responsibilities. And I know that the BSA has said that more variances are granted for not-for-profits than they are for profit-making developers. So, this is, again, it seems to be a slippery slope that if a church could just sell and get a variance and build as high and as dense as it wants, then why wouldn't any other institution? But, again, churches do have, I think, maybe, and I'm not testifying as a CBA, as a chair here, it's my own personal view, that there's a special responsibility between the churches and the congregation and the surrounding community. And I know from a meeting that CBA Three put together that the Catholic Church seems to have some kind of rule that the community has to weigh in on sales. And it's not just the community of congregants of the particular church, but it's the surrounding community. And there's a lawsuit that's proceeding at the Vatican on the very nature. So, that might be instructive as to non-diocese-related buildings. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have a question. What, how many, or is there any general sense of how many faith-based have come to Board Eight seeking their input, or have the deals been done and then you find out about them afterward? I'm just wondering if there's been any dialogue.
There was a church on Eighty-Fifth and Park that sold its landmarked facility, nursery school, to Exdel, which put in its Park Avenue, which put in a very, very expensive building. And we had issues with access to the church, accessibility for the disabled. Other than that, do you know Adam? Oh, that's right. I'm sorry. Adam, who's on our zoning and development committee, reminded me that St. Monica's sold 100,000 square feet to Exdel, which then proceeded to tear down and demolish the entire block between Seventy-Ninth and Eightieth on First Avenue. So, while the theory for towers on a base is that it will protect the surrounding tenements and keep them because they will buy the air rights from the adjoining properties, in this case, it bought them from St. Monica's. So, it preserved the church, but in effect, it destroyed the retail and what might be rent-regulated apartments nearby. So, there needs to be, obviously, and I know that you're well aware of it, Madame Borough President, because of the task force that you've convened, but there needs to be some kind of balancing between the needs of these churches for money and the impact on the surrounding community. Thank you.
Thank you. Martin? You want to use the microphone? Are you Martin Heinstoff? Yes.
This is maybe off the subject somewhat, but.
Nothing's off the subject.
I am a member of many meetup organizations, and they're all nonprofit, things like computer programming and book clubs. And we're always looking for a place to meet. And we only have, like, maybe 10 people at each meeting. And it's very hard. I've, for decades, we've had problems like this. And so, we end up meeting in a pub or something like that, and it's very noisy and it's hard for seniors to hear in a place like that. But that's what we do. So, I just wanted to say, this is one of the land uses or property uses that would be extremely, you know, welcomed, you know, to the public. That's all.
Thank you very much. That's very helpful. What borough do you, where do you live in Manhattan? Okay, well, I'll give you a list later. Avi Garilic and then John McInnes.
Hi there.
Pull it up. Pull it up or just take it out.
My name's Avi Garilic. I'm here as a lay member representing the Fort Tryon Jewish Center in Washington Heights. So, we own a building on Fort Washington Avenue, which, when the membership was dwindling in 2007, the synagogue leadership made a deal with a real estate developer who owned an adjoining property on Overlook Terrace, right? And the deal was air rights and egress in exchange for $9 million in renovation of the building. And what happened was, at the housing crash, a year later, the bank pulled the financing from the development, and then they were in litigation for about a decade after that. Recently, the litigation was settled in the developer's favor, and now the bank is foreclosing on the developer and auctioning the property. So, in the meanwhile, our congregation has been forced out of the building for that entire period and is renting, as well as paying exorbitant insurance costs on the building that we own, which is dwindling our reserves. So, you know, the fear, we're a progressive organization, the fear is that we will have to, in this auction, sell off to a developer who's going to build expensive condos just in order to save our congregation. And so, I'm coming just to bring the matter to your attention and to try to see if there's some way that city action can help build affordable housing or do something for community purpose for the synagogue.
You're very famous, unfortunately, or infamous, so.
I just had a clarifying question. So, the foreclosed developer owned the property next to the synagogue, and they're under foreclosure now. And so, the bank is presumably potentially taking over that real estate, and you're interested in seeking an affordable housing develop, you know, solution for the adjacent property? Is that what you're inquiring?
Yeah, I'm unfortunately not super clear, not being on the board, as to whether the properties have been bundled and are being auctioned as a bundled unit or what. But the, my understanding is that we need a developer to buy off the property in order to get funding for renovation of the synagogue space.
And so, you're looking for a developer that's most likely, someone that will contribute to the larger community benefit as well as partner with the synagogue to fulfill the previous commitments, is what?
Yeah.
Over the congregation?
Yeah.
Thank you, Avi. People talk about the synagogue a lot, and it's instructive of what challenges exist, if not thought out in advance. So, hopefully, we can work with you. I know others have tried to come to some, to be supportive, but I really appreciate you being here today because everybody talks about you. John McInnes, yep?
Good evening, Gail. Thank you very much for having this event. My name is John McInnes. I'm a real estate broker, and I'm here on behalf of my client, the Greater Metropolitan Baptist Church of Harlem. We're located on 123rd Street between Lenox Avenue and Adam Clayton Palau Junior Boulevard. The reason for my visit tonight is to try to reach out to this group here to see if anybody knows any community facility developers or religious organizations that would like to purchase the landmark structure on 123rd Street. The church does not necessarily want to sell to a real estate developer. They would be, their hearts would be warmed if we can please sell it to a religious organization. So, I did bring some marketing flyers to that effect. If you're interested at all or know anyone that might be interested, please visit me. I'm sitting in the back-left corner. And if you want to get in touch with me, you can call me at (617) 833-5668, or my email jim@compass.com. Thank you very much, Gail.
I have a question. So, are you, you're saying that if the price is right, because you obviously need the funding as, or the institution does, and that you will prefer that it be sold to another faith-based or nonprofit. Obviously, a developer may not be interested if it's landmarked. Sometimes they can build in the back.
Correct.
I've seen that. I've been through all that. But I'm just trying to understand the thinking behind all of this.
Yeah, I think, I think the highest and best used to be some kind of religious organization that's able to maybe turn some of the space into offices, and then some of the space, of course, as religious sanctuary space. It's a beautiful structure that was built in 1897 by a German congregation, actually. It's got an incredible history, and large stained glass windows that were imported from Munich back then, which is just incredible. So, it'd be a shame to lose the, to lose that sanctuary space. Harlem certainly is undergoing a lot of changes. It would be great if we could maybe do good service to our clients by helping them to save the structure for its future use. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Richard Correll from Ethical Culture. I went to the Campaign for Citizenship/Ethical Culture, just so you know.
I know that. I know that.
Everybody knows that.
Well, thank you for having us forum. I'm speaking really because our situation is very typical. It's very much like the situation you first started to speak of. We have a 110-year-old building, which we're very emotionally attached to, but it's a 110-year-old building, and it has all the problems that you could imagine, a building of that age, and maintenance is beyond our capacity. We do share the building with other religious organizations. We have a church that meets on Sunday. We have a synagogue on Saturday. So, we do share with others. The thing about raising the funds, we understand that the value of our air rights is significant. And of course, there's no one within the immediate area. And it's frustrating, really, not only to have this landmark building in a landmark district, but also to have a pent-up value, which we kind of feel that we could use not only for our building, but for our mission. And so, the investment that our forbears have made in this property could be used and for a good purpose, for the purpose of our mission. Instead, we're basically devoted to maintaining a building. So, that is the odd piece I would just like to add.
Sorry, I'm, I'm sure the Borough President is familiar with the landmark district, but how large is the landmark district?
Well, it's the Upper West Side, so it's a very large district.
And so, you know, policy, we're interested in looking at different policy, potential ideas. And so, is there any kind of thoughts about transfer of air rights and distance and for a particular purpose that you would want to see those air rights transferred, if they were to be transferred? Anything of those natures? I'm just curious as to.
Well, of course, we have the sensibilities that everyone else expresses, and the member from Community Board Eight was very eloquent in mentioning that just to transfer our problem to someone else, of course, is not something that we want to have. But of course, we have commercial districts in New York that can bear a lot of development, while our district, of course, has its own kind of charm and history, which we would like to see preserved as well. By sale of our, sale of the air rights means that we're not using them ourselves. In other words, we're contributing to the historic neighborhood by restraining ourselves, in a sense, by passing it on to the real commercial district. And that way, we can contribute much more, we feel, to the city, to the community, to our district, as well as to our own community and those we serve.
So, I know that Judson Church has been talking about this. Are you working with that coalition? Have you been part of it? Are you aware of it?
No, I have not.
So, there is a group of, and perhaps, yeah. Kate's here? All right. Where's Kate? So, Kate, can you go on up? You can, yeah, you can talk. You know how to talk. So, I would love to have you describe a little bit about what the coalition has been doing because this type of creativity for solving a problem is something that I know ethical and others could find advantageous. And since I know every inch of Two West 64th Street for, since 1968. Go ahead.
Thank you so much.
Introduce yourself.
Yeah, I'm Kate Toth. I'm with Bricks and Mortals, which is based at Judson World Church. We are in the process of getting our 501(c)(3) right now. So, a lot of what hasn't spoken about already is super relevant to the work we're doing. We're trying to, number one, we're going to do testimony next month, so. But just in the interim, we're trying to help keep religious institutions in their buildings, trying to give houses of faith basically the information to be able to make the best decisions possible for their own communities. So, we're not coming in with any sort of agenda, like, we want you to do this, or how, we, you know, want you to do that. But we're trying to give communities the options to be able to bring in revenue to their buildings so they can make these changes and sustain their buildings in the way that they need, including making multi-use spaces, which is very much the Judson model, and then all the way towards the end of the spectrum, which is helping advise on predevelopments that congregations who get to that point are taken advantage of and have the most information possible. So, I would say that, you know, anyone that's in that position where they feel like we are at a point with our church or our congregation where we don't know what to do, our bills are piling up, we want to make a more sustainable future, you know, please come talk to me about Bricks and Mortals, and, you know, we can have a conversation about going from there.
I think, thank you. And just tell me, I think some of this came about because in the East Midtown rezoning, some of you may know that. Certainly, Board Eight is aware of that, and Board Five. The issue there was from 57th down to approximately 42nd. The landmarks can in fact sell their air rights, and there are quite a few faith-based as well as others in that area. So, as opposed to being able to sell just across the street or next door, which is not possible on your block, they are able to sell within that larger East Midtown area. So, that's an example that I think Judson Church looked at as an example and said, "Why can't some of the faith-based do that?" Not so easy because it's not like you're in one area. You're all over. So, all of this is part of how can we make it happen? If in fact, there was, I'm making this up, the opportunity for ethical or somebody else to sell to a commercial area, that might to sell to a commercial area, that might work. So that's what we're thinking of, just so you know. There's, air rights is something that we need to have more discussion about.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, and sorry, just to add, so basically our coalition is looking at, across the whole spectrum, so not just looking at air rights and affordable housing, but also looking at how to make your space a multi-use property and other things like that, that really, like I said, like the Judson model has that. So definitely not just focusing on affordable housing, although we are, you know, we are focused on keeping your space mission consistent as much as possible. But right now, very much continuation of the conversation that we're having at the task force table, we'd like, you know, to invite everyone to that table to make sure it's as diverse and representative as possible, so we understand really what's going on and how, what changes need to be made and how we can make those changes best as possible. So, thank you.
Jolie Greenleaf, and after that, Simon McGowan.
Hi, I'm Jolie Greenleaf. I represent an organization called Tenant NYC.
You gotta talk into the mic.
How's that?
Better.
Great. My name is Jolie Greenleaf. I represent an organization, an arts organization, called Tenant NYC. And many organizations in the field of performing arts are also struggling to find affordable spaces to perform. In the past, we often went to churches to find affordable space rentals. And now that churches are struggling, that has often been passed down to the performing arts folks, so that we are being priced out of being able to rent churches at a rate that we can afford. Often, it's usually around $10,000 a day now. And for small arts organizations, we just simply can't afford that. As a leader of many arts organizations, well, and as a leader of my own arts organization, I've been looking to purchase a venue, and the hope would be to create a partnership with a church, because as a performing arts venue, you often are performing on evenings. Weekends would only really happen in the afternoon or the evening, which allows for an opportunity for a faith-based organization or a church congregation to use the space at times that are really fitting for them. So I think that the arts can really align well with parishes in this case. We've identified a space that we, that I've totally fallen in love with. It's in Harlem, and it's currently owned by a developer who made promises to both your office, as well as Community Board Ten, to create a nonprofit and run the space for the community and arts at, and by creating a nonprofit, they would basically make it possible for the, the space to be rented on a sliding scale or affordable basis. But they haven't actually followed through with any of that. I went to the Community Board Ten meeting last week and found that they were actually trying to find a way for a for-profit organization to get in there and create a giant playground structure within this beautiful church. So I have already, a couple months ago, met with Stephanie Chan from the task force, and I told her about our hope to try and align with a parish, as well as find an appropriate space. So much of the music that my organization does is sacred music, and so in a way, we're kind of perfectly aligned. Like, we need a space that looks beautiful and has the same church aesthetic that so many congregants would like to see in their own spaces as well. So I'm really just saying that if there's an opportunity for the arts to align with the mission that you are working on, I am someone who very much wants to stay involved in that conversation and do whatever I can to create something wonderful for both.
We'll follow up. Stephanie's on vacation, but she'll be back and we will follow up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Simon?
Okay.
And after that, Brendan McDevitt.
Hi, thank you so much for having us here and hosting tonight. I'm representing EMEA, which is an organization that's been in Harlem for 50 years, serving the homeless. Unfortunately, the pastor who started the organization passed away in 2008, and a group of us have kind of taken the torch on. And in doing so, we've looked at the, it's a townhouse structure, about 4,000 square feet. We no longer house anyone, but we're now helping those with food insecurity in the neighborhood. So about four years ago, we had maybe 30 families coming every Sunday for food pantry. We're now up to 100. So 100 people coming in and out of townhouse every Sunday afternoon. So we've thought that it's best to potentially sell the property. It's, it's essentially like a single-family home, and try to find another location in the neighborhood. It's an interfaith organization. We love to be part of either, you know, a church, a synagogue, a mosque, you know, make, make the most use of maybe a commercial kitchen or parish hall that's not used on a Sunday afternoon, and just continue the mission for another 50 years. It's, you know, it's kind of a catch-22. We, we've served the homeless population for 50 years, but the best deal for this organization is the highest price, and it'd be probably best used as housing, you know, but not necessarily affordable housing, because we need another 50 years to serve the neighborhood. So kind of not sure what to do in terms of finding the right buyer for the property, but also finding the right new home in Harlem.
Could you meet on Saturday? Because people are still eating at church on Sunday.
Yes, definitely. We actually do monthly brunch on Saturday, so it'd be a great fit to continue that on Saturday.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Brendan?
Hi, thanks for hosting this. I kind of wear two hats, if you will. I'm a location scout professionally, so I work on film crews that rent a lot of churches, a lot of synagogues to serve meals to crews or do hair and makeup and whatnot. So I just want to, I'm interested in helping, you know, nonprofits and churches and synagogues, et cetera, you know, make revenue by renting. So if those kind of opportunities, I'm on a lot of message board with other location scouts and with other film crews that, you know, I can connect nonprofits to, so that, you know, we're always looking for the nearest place where we can either serve a meal or just have overflow space.
How, how do you go about finding locations now? Not, I do know a lot of scouts, but how do you go about doing that now? Does it, your own network? Is it?
It's mostly just research, Google, et cetera, or sometimes, you know, just on the street. You know, you're, you're at a townhouse in wherever, and you rent down the street the nearest church that will allow you to, to do that.
I rented my house once I got in so much trouble, I never did it again. Here's...
So yeah, there, there are a lot of, you know, there's money to be made, and there's also organizations that don't know what the going rate is. You know, happy to advise on, on how we can monetize that properly.
That'd be great. And, and most of, most of the use of that space is during a Monday through Friday, or is it, you know, kind of all times, like at night?
It's, it's kind of all times, but generally, people want to film Monday through Friday.
Right through, yeah.
The other hat I happen to wear...
Yeah, that was my second question.
Is, just as a volunteer, I want to be clear, I'm not staff or anything like that, and don't know all the intricacies, but I am a member of a church that meets on 34th Street currently, at Hammerstein Ballroom. It's called Hillsong. And we've been around since about 2011, and there's a lot of venue challenges that we've had in that time. Some of them are particular to venues like Hammerstein Ballroom, including breaking contracts, kicking us out at a couple days' notice and making us find a new venue. There's, we've had a turnaway over 1,000 people on Sundays because we get over capacity. It's sometimes a little bit different challenge than other organizations face in this time, but it's really not a sustainable model. Even to find baptism pools has, has been a real challenge, and I've been able to use some of the resources I have from scouting to help the church, but I don't do it full-time. I, I just help when I can. But we've been able to meet at a public school in Chelsea to do baptisms and bring some revenue into the public school system. But there just happens to be a lot of challenges with that, and I don't really have anything to necessarily report other than finances aren't as much of an issue. It's just, there's a lot of logistical hurdles. And ideally, there would be a more kind of sustainable model for a church like ours, which we do five services on a Sunday and seat over, you know, 2,300 people. So you're talking about 10,000, 12,000 people in Hammerstein Ballroom on a Sunday. And it's people waiting outside in the cold and the hot, you know, in the rain, whatever. Hopefully, there's a better solution going forward that we can, you know, create, whether it's working with the city or independently with the developers or whatnot. But it's, it's certainly a challenge for a church like ours to, to meet on a regular basis.
I wanted to know, is the intent overall, over time, for the church to purchase their own space, or is it something where you feel like the location works for you?
Well, to be honest, the, the relationship's not great with some of the venues that we've rented over time. So I don't think Hammerstein Ballroom's a long-term solution, from, from what I gather. Just because of the challenges that we have had, we would like to build our own space because, you know, we basically pay a lot of money for renting once a week for 52 weeks, you know, a year, 52 rentals. Ends up being a lot of money. And just because it's a nonprofit doesn't mean that you get any break from Comic-Con or whoever else might rent it on any other day of the week.
Mm-hmm.
So yeah, the, the interest long-term is to, to purchase and have more of a sustainable model where instead of renting once a week, you're owning a building and then renting it out, maybe for concerts, for events, et cetera. Or some of the people here that, you know, need space, and space is always, always a problem.
Thank you very much. Very helpful. Hazen Kuler, and then Justin Hugh.
Hello. My name, I did not think I was going to be speaking today, otherwise I probably would have combed my hair. But my name is...
Your hair looks fabulous.
Oh, thank you, thank you. It's, it's designed this way. My name is Hazen Kyler. I'm the artistic director of a theater, film, art, and music company called The Greenhouse Ensemble. And what we do at Greenhouse is we cultivate a positive, judgment-free environment where artists of any discipline create fully-realized work. And recently, I've been going to Community Board Seven's meetings because we're working alongside Goddard Riverside Community Center and the Bernie Wall Center with a project called the Upper West Side Theater and Arts District. April Adams told me to come to this. I had no idea what this was. And, but what the Upper West Side Theater District is, it's about taking the different venues on the Upper West Side and beginning to curate a lot of the really great independent theater and arts into different venues and also into different storefronts, so that it creates a, a, a new beacon for independent theater and art. A lot of studies, obviously, have gone, been happening recently from the Comptroller Report. Also, another report that, that came out a few days ago about smaller independent theaters. I believe another one's coming out from the League of Independent Theaters as well. But the economic impact is, is obvious. And I believe that there's a way to share the economic impact with a very wide range of not just artists who need, who need help, but also for religious institutions as well.
Great idea. Thank you very much. That's very, very helpful. Something to think about that gets us away from the challenge and maybe some creative ideas for addressing it. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Justin. We love Justin Hugh.
Thank you very much, Borough President. I'm sorry, I don't have no hair to comb. I like to talk about the Archdiocese of New York, have quite a few empty buildings and a lot in Chinatown area. We have been trying to contact the Archdiocese. We have been writing letters, even writing a letter to the Vatican. We have received no answers. Five years ago, they closed the largest Catholic church in Chinatown, which is St. Joseph on Morro Street. In spite of the vibrant congregation, they insist to close that church. Then they closed the convent on Henry Street. Then they have another rectory in Madison Street, they closed that down. And nominally, they say the property belonged to the current, still existing Catholic church called the Transfiguration. But the Transfiguration School is one of the few protocol school has people, has students waiting in line, try to get in. But the Archdiocese won't allow the Transfiguration School to use St. Joseph's School, the empty classroom. The Morro Street location is two, three blocks away from Number One, Manhattan Plaza, which is a high-rising luxury building in Chinatown. It's tremendous. It's huge. Everybody can see here, if you look downtown. And we heard a rumor that the Archdiocese is going to sell the whole St. Joseph Church and St. Joseph Building to a developers. We cannot control, even I'm a former congregation of the church, but so far, the Archdiocese refused to talk to us. And because, I guess, they don't want our input. We hope the Borough President's office or other, any other organization presenting here can help us. We want to talk to Archdiocese. We're not stopping, they are making money, but we want partially to be used by our community, including old St. Joseph Church, St. Joseph School, and the St. Joseph convent on the Henry Street, and the old rectory on Madison Street, and one more rectory of old St. James Church, which are located, St. James Place, which ought to be sold, to be sold by the Archdiocese. But we like to talk to them. We say, we'd like to say this partially should be used by the local community. We are, we don't have no theaters. We don't have, have a big assembly hall. The ideal, the St. Joseph Church is ideal place for the Chinese community to use. If anyone here, know anyone in the Archdiocese, please give us a call. I would be very happy to talk to you about the situation in Chinatown. We don't want the building to have to be another Manhattan Plaza Number One. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Justin. We will make sure that you talk to the Archdiocese, and I deeply appreciate you bringing, because I know there's a long list in Harlem and in the Lower East Side and Chinatown, and we will make sure that you talk to them. Thank you very much for coming here today. Looks like Bram Berg, Mr. Berg? Thank you.
Hello. Thanks for having this event. I'm Bram. I was trained as an architect, but also work in the real estate development finance field, and kind of by accident ended up into the faith-based realm as a strategic advisor for a couple of churches around Brooklyn and Manhattan. And there's a whole kind of complexity of kind of problems that I've been encountering, working with some of these institutions. But a couple I could, I hope to share. So obviously, like, a lot of faith-based institutions aren't trained in property management or finance, so a lot of capital improvement projects, you know, usually go to the wayside or are only really addressed when the issue is super, super urgent. And for a couple of the congregations that I'm working with, with membership dwindling, these types of improvement plans become super onerous on whether they should take out a loan and then, or how they should go about it. So with these congregations, we're kind of creating, I partner with architects or engineers based on kind of the need. We're, we're trying to create short-term, immediate kind of triage situations for, for these congregations. But then a lot of, so I think it would be a little bit helpful to have like a resource or a database for churches to have a couple architects and engineers, brick and mortar, maybe myself when I get a little bit more of a track record. But just so that churches who are in dire need of these things have a place to go, because I think a lot of them look to individual contractors who, you know, inflate contracts, and it doesn't go well for a lot of people in that situation. The second thing is, what I've been encountering is a lot of churches look very strategically on how to kind of cover operating expenses that are really kind of ballooning much faster than their income. So they're looking towards government subsidy programs. So one church I'm working with is, looks towards a, like a homeless shelter bed stabilization program, and now it may be a pre-K. But one of the challenges that I, we're kind of encountering, which we'll, we'll be able to get through, but one of the things is if they were to look towards a more significant capital improvement program, there becomes a trouble in terms of how do you relocate or temporarily... or temporarily stop your current program to be able to fix the current issues and prepare for yourself longer term while then moving forward. So, I think that type of awareness, or at least some instruction, would be helpful coming from Borough President's Office. And then the last thing is a little bit more, I think, what I was, what I've been encountering in Brooklyn, but one church I was working with had a huge complication with a tax lien that shouldn't have been a tax lien, and then trouble with resolving the issue with the Department of Finance. So, and then that turned into a foreclosure process and it got very complicated. And it gets to the point where the Attorney General doesn't want to get involved, but it's also a problem that shouldn't have happened in the first place. So, I think better communication structures in terms of handling tax lien situations and, and find, with the Department of Finance would be really critical. Yeah, so those are kind of a couple overarching kind of themes.
Thank you for the, for those comments. There's actually a, a lawyer who is working on the tax lien issue named Paula Siegel. I recommend that you connect with, with her and I forget, do you remember the name of her organization? It's, yeah, it's just, Take Root Justice is the name of the organization that is looking into the tax lien issues around not-for-profit organizations.
Okay, that's very helpful.
That's one. The second is, how have you connected with the different institutions that you've been working with? Did they reach out to you? Did you cold-call them? Were there issues that they were facing and just, what was the process for you getting involved in this space?
Yeah, couple random and couple more obvious ones, but because I've, in the architecture community, a lot of architects have connected me to church projects, mostly in part because essentially I'm serving as like an owner's rep type of model. So the architects are looking for, you know, they can, they can do fixes and they can do kind of plans, but in terms of tax policy or, or kind of strategic planning with financial numbering, they kind of pass that along to me. And then, real estate brokers as well, who might know what churches who are, don't want to sell, but they want to plan for, like, figure out how to kind of, whether they reimagine their space or restructure their, their organization, those are kind of how the leads have been.
So, I want to, obviously, in terms of the government programs, I have a synagogue now that's trying to rent space, and they would prefer to rent it to what they call government program, i.e. pre-K. That would be their preference or a arts organization because that fits within their mission. Have you had luck doing that or fortune doing that in terms of what you just described?
So, the, the one I just described, we're still kind of in, I think, a middle of the process, but that's a big question mark and more so than the pre-K, which would, I would like to know who that synagogue would be, but is kind of like, logistically, it's super challenging to move a bed stabilization program in Harlem, like, that's kind of challenging. So, that would be kind of a bit, like, we're working with the church to figure out if there's a partner that might be able to lend them the space where that they rent for a certain period of time. But also, it's, I think, that type of program would be really interesting to me to figure out if that's even possible to, to do. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you for identifying all the problems. When you figure out the answers, let us know.[835.62][835.62](Laughter). The tax lien is something that we are very familiar with. In the City Council, I must have made like, in the Bloomberg administration, when this first came up, I must have made like eight hundred phone calls and we got rid of most of the challenges. But I can't tell you how many part-time faith-based leaders had no idea that they had a tax lien issue. Sometimes the mail went somewhere else or they didn't pay attention to it, and they almost lost the entire building. But we were able to solve most of the issues, but I would say that that is still communication with finance. Department of Finance has got to improve, and sometimes they have a building that is maybe rented on the property, and then there's a different way which that particular building is looked at by the Department of Finance, and they had not read the fine print. So, yes, that's a huge issue. But I think that is, as long as caught in time, is possible. But the other thing you mentioned was just the short-term and the long-term figuring out, and that's a challenge that I find in talking to faith-based leaders, what are your short-term and what is your long-term? That comes up all the time. And I just want to say, no question about the lack of knowledge, and many faith-based say, the first thing they say is, "We are not familiar with the engineers and the architects." I had one example, I'm not going to say where it is, but the faith-based leader hired his friggin nephew to be the architect. I took one look at those plans, I said, "Get the nephew out of here and get the plans out of here." And, because he thought that would be the most cost-effective, and of course, if it had gone any further, it would have been the most disastrous. So he ended up hiring a qualified engineer and architect, and he is getting exactly what he wanted on his landmark building, he's able to build behind it, and it's all working out. Got to have somebody who's familiar with church-based professional, and if it's a landmarked, make sure you know what you're doing. So, those are, absolutely correct on some of those challenges. Okay, so, the issue now is, why don't we, if anybody just wants to come up and tell us your thoughts, because this is a wonderful crowd, it's a large crowd, you don't need to sign up, just come up and tell us what you're thinking.
Hi, my name is Timothy Eckersley. I work with Gertler and Wenthey Architects, where a firm of architects that specialize in the design of churches. I'd like to give one example of a project we're doing right now in Queens, which is exactly what you were talking about, a combination of, this is a new building, a small church with a pre-K board of ed school above it, and that's being in progress right now. So that's an incredibly good fit for that congregation. They've got a lot of stability right there with a very long-term lease with a client that's not going to go away. But I wanted to make a, a point about landmark buildings, and we worked on ethical culture with, with Richard. This is a really pressing problem for those churches that are landmarked. And I think it's really not a fair situation, because the, the owners of landmark buildings are lumbered with what I would say is an extremely important public, public duty, if you like, to preserve those buildings which have an extraordinarily important role in their communities, but they're not really getting very much in return. In fact, very little. I think there should be some mechanism to support landmark owners who are in difficult financial situation, but also, as, as has been identified, the, a very fair system is the concept of air rights. But it is so restrictive right now. I'm just underlining what, what has already been said. I think it should be liberalized to allow for those, those congregations in, in bad financial straits to pass on their air rights over a wider district. And it obviously has to be done in a rational way, but I think that's an, would be a, an very big, important change.
Okay, I actually have a question. So, I mean, apart from the fact that with maintaining landmark buildings, just materials are incredibly expensive, would there be, I guess, in terms of the actual paperwork, the filing going to Landmarks Preservation Commission, if there were ways in which to eliminate or shorten those hurdles, would that be something that could be really beneficial to faith-based or nonprofit spaces that are in landmark buildings?
I don't see any immediate way of doing that. You know, the Landmarks Commission does carry out an important role, and they get incredibly detailed in their requests, but I see where they're coming from. Sometimes they're a little bit inconsistent in their approach, depending on, you know, changes in staff, their, their attitudes towards the details of preservation can alter. But I, I appreciate what they're doing and support them, and you do have to get into a lot of detail and, and be able to show exactly how you're going to fulfill their requirements. I love their, their blessing, which is called the Certificate of Appropriateness.[1191.08][1191.08](Laughter).
Thank you.
Okay.
It's better than the Certificate of Not Appropriate, however.
Hi, I'm Peter Cook. I'm the Executive Director of the New York State Council of Churches. One of the big things that we do is work with faith communities to look at their property and how to organize themselves in such a way so that they can have the highest and best use for their property. So, if I were just to, I'm really grateful to hear different people who've offered their thoughts today. This is a great forum. A lot of times, I think, getting the dots connected is one of the greater challenges, and so to have these kinds of forums is really useful. If I could just say, we try to offer, operate in the pre-development space. We do this with Bricks and Mortals and also with the Interfaith Affordable Housing Collaborative to really kind of go through the steps that a faith community needs to take before they start getting into a conversation with a developer or calling your office or whatever that might be. And we're really in the process of trying to build a referral network and that set of steps that congregations need to take. So, for example, bits of advice that we would get, give would be, get an appropriate appraisal on your property, find an attorney who can represent you and only you, not the developer, work with an architect to get an initial idea of what's going on, take a look at your zoning and what's possible. But probably the most important thing that churches need to do is to look at their mission and how they are building relationships in their community and how their property is relating not only to their neighborhood but to the city, and building those kinds of connections and relationships. So, there's a number of pre-steps that we think congregations need to take that then position themselves to look at the range of opportunities and enter into thoughtful negotiations with a developer, somebody else who's not going to take advantage of them, but do the right thing that helps further that church's mission. And then the last thing I would just say is that churches sometimes are in a pickle when they have to sell, that they have to get the full value for the sale of their property, which may or may not be consistent with their social goal of building affordable housing. And, you know, having to kind of work that question through with the Attorney General and with the city and so on, I think is another factor. I think a lot of churches want to do the right thing, but they also are not always sure how to navigate that in terms of the legal landscape. Thanks.
I have a question. First of all, thank you for all your efforts for this task force and many others, but have you had any success in terms of building affordable housing, starting early? Has any of this paid off? Because I have to say, I've been doing this for, you know, twenty years.
Right.
And I have seen, I've been able to landmark some, not the wishes necessarily of the congregation, but it has wishes of the community. And then on the other hand, I've not necessarily been able to support building and affordable housing and mission. So I'm just wondering if you see any light that addresses some of these very concerned and people who care about all the above?
Well, I guess that lifts up two projects in particular. One would be, one done with the City Society, United Methodist Church, working with Bronx Pro to build a two-hundred-and-twenty-unit affordable housing development for seniors, including people who were previously incarcerated in the Bronx. It's a beautiful structure that came as, they had to take down a church building to be able to do this, but it's very well done. And also, Tree of Life in Jamaica is also put together, this pretty remarkable project of a mix of affordable and market and a health clinic and so on. There's a lot of other examples of churches who are doing this kind of work that have succeeded. There are also examples of churches that have failed because they didn't do the kind of pre-development kind of effort that we are describing, and we're trying to learn from those experiences too, because they got into a deal too quickly with a developer and they didn't really understand their value and their rights as they entered into this. And so, this is particularly a problem in New York City, and an even bigger problem in Manhattan, where land values are high and where it can be rather seductive to have somebody wave a lot of cash in front of you, but if you don't know what you're doing, it could really backfire.
I have a question. Is another thing that you would advise an organization to do would be getting a capital needs assessment to find out what the condition of their building is currently?
Yeah.
I feel like that's something that's not often promoted.
You know, anything within reason and within cost to know where you stand to start. You know, sometimes we just kind of jump to step ten to say, "We want to use our building for a childcare center," and we hadn't bothered to notice that we had a tax lien, you know, on the building, and our, our books are a mess and we need to have an accountant come in and kind of straighten that out. You know, these kinds of basic pre-steps is what we need to encourage people to do. So, anyway, I don't know if that helps.
Very helpful, thank you.
Hi, my name's John George. I'm a first-year student at Columbia, and I just wanted to talk about specifically-
What else were you in the past?
I was an intern for you over the summer.[1623.01][1623.01](Laughter). Yes, that's right. I had a lot of fun. Gail's very popular.
We used to hang out on the weekends, and I'd go like fifteen places, and he came with me.
Yes. President Brew is very, very popular in Manhattan, if you didn't know yet. So, anyway, Columbia, of course, is planning their Manhattanville expansion. I was just at a Community Board Nine meeting where a representative from the university spoke to the community members about what they're trying to do, and of course, there were a lot of concerns raised. Definitely, the community is very, very worried about what that extremely large expansion is going to have on the neighborhood of Manhattanville. The entire business school is moving to that location, part of the Graduate School of Arts and Sciences, there is a new Mind, Brain, Behavior Institute. It's very good for the university, but it's going to reverberate significantly in the community surrounding it, and it's going to change the demographics, it's going to lead to gentrification. And the university is taking measures in the short term to alleviate some of the concerns, but ultimately, once the expansion is complete within the next few years, and once the incentives that the university has to keep the community in mind are gone, I do not, I, I see the community being damaged, and specifically with relation to faith-based institutions, there are a number in that area. I think there's six directly in the vicinity and across, across Broadway, and there's a few more in a moderate distance from that new expansion. So, I just wanted to put forth the idea of this issue specifically and also on a wider theme, maybe trying to predict or assess what real estate developers and companies might do in these areas in the future, because it's not an immediate concern, but once those areas start to, once the property values start to go up, they might start to take advantage of these faith-based institutions in that area, and it might be something to watch to see if there's any way to mitigate that.
Thank you. You can see we have fun on the weekends. Thank you, John, very much. It was great. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Demaris McLean, and I live on the Upper West Side. And I just wanted to encourage us to consider for the people who live in the neighborhoods of these institutions, the value that they have in many ways. They are often not tall buildings, and so it allows light and air and space into the neighborhood, and as we have these huge buildings going in, we don't have that in our neighborhoods as much as we used to with the tall buildings. They also offer social services that are poorly needed, badly needed, and they do this regularly and with the support of the community. They engage the community, they offer opportunities for community members to volunteer, to come together, to have a gathering space, both for those who have and those who would like to serve. to serve and those who receive the services. They add, in other words, to the soul and to the knitting together and to the building community of our neighborhood. So even for these buildings that are not landmarked, how can we protect these buildings before they become landmarked and they become impossible to maintain for these congregations? How can we support the institutions within these buildings so that we can preserve the neighborhood the way it is? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Suber. You don't want to say anything? Come stand up, you have things to say. We've been friends for 40 years.
I'm here with my wife, Reverend Joanne Owens. And she knows I do not do this, but I'm here with my wife, who is a pastor in Far Rockway, and Reverend Joanne Owens, who is now the president of the Ministerial Alliance of the AME Church. So I thought it would be important for her to kind of get to know exactly what's happening in your borough.
Are there issues also that you are finding in terms of the status of the building or ways in which development could be supportive? I mean, I don't know, I'm asking the same.
I'll leave that to Reverend Joanne.
Thank you, Reverend. I just know him forever and I couldn't handle him just sitting there, you know.
I have adopted Tony as my guru and mentor in this process. I've been pastoring, I've pastored for over 30 years and just was elevated to a new position as Presiding Elder, but pastored in Harlem on 116th and Madison Avenue. Yes, and had been there for, actually my father, my grandfather founded the church 90 years ago and it's in a building that is not landmarked, but certainly it was an old bank and now has housed the church for more than 70 years. We, when pastoring there, we were trying to do development and vetted several developers and we were certainly concerned about, one, the nature of the community and also the mission in terms of trying to maintain affordability within the community. And we found that it was difficult to manage both. The building has another story, which is 3,000 square feet of space that has not been utilized in 40 years because the congregation could not repair the elevator and we were trying to figure out how to get to use that space and who could we get in so that we can continue to stay where we are without tearing the building down and doing. We were able to house the Second Corinthian Baptist Church, who has done development and about finished, and they were able to pay us rent so that we would be able to do and maintain and do some other stuff and we were able to work that out. I think that what had been already offered, to be able to walk with pastors and faith communities through the process of development when you're stuck between a rock and a hard place, when you have a building that you're trying to maintain and you have a dwindling congregation, how do you, how do you manage that? And certainly being able to do ministry when you're trying to pay the lights and the gas and all of the other things that come with an aging building. So I came to hear and listen and certainly prayerfully offering the future some suggestions, but thank you all for what you've contributed.
Thank you very much. I just want to mention one aspect that I don't know if it's helpful, but in one church we were able to get them government money and I can tell you how, and this is the hardest part of all. If there is a portion of the building that will not be used for religious but is a nonprofit, and in this case it's the West Side Campaign Against Hunger on 86th Street, it's part of St. Paul and St. Andrew, some of you know this story. It took us five years, but in that particular case, we were able to pay for the renovation of the kitchen and the renovation of the space where people who were coming in for the food pantry wait and that whole area is paid for by government money. And in that case also, we were able to pay for the ADA ramp leading into the building at the front. That was state money. State money is more flexible than city money. So again, if you had a situation where you had 3,000 square feet and an elevator needed and it was going to be used, you were able to solve the problem, I think. But if you were in that situation and that space could be used for a nonprofit that would then fix the roof because there were leaks, at the same time pay for, in a sense, the rest of the building without being so explicit, then that would be possible. But you have to spend a great deal of time with the Office of Management and Budget and work with them over time, with your attorney, to figure out how you do it legally and you cannot put any religious artifacts or anything in the space. You can obviously have dinners there, but it has to be something very clearly not religious. But it does help fix up a large building. So I just mentioned that because I believe it's the only time that's been done and OMB has now done it and so they are willing to consider other spaces. So I just mentioned that as one other option, but it is, you know, one that takes great clarification on both sides. So unless anybody else wants to speak, is there anybody else who wants to bring, yes, go ahead, come on up with somebody else. Hi, Mark. Everybody knows Mark.
Not as many people as know you, Gail. As evidenced by all the people who are here, I just want to say it's so great that you bring people together and I'm happy to listen. A number of my friends have already spoken.
Why don't you give your name?
I'm Mark Greenberg. I'm the Executive Director of the Interfaith Assembly on Homelessness and Housing and so a lot of ideas have come up, but one thing that was very clear is that there is needs of particularly art groups and then there are empty spaces that congregations have and I'm just, I was suggesting to your deputy that maybe something like a bulletin board, like a, you know, a kind of matching, you know, arrangement where people put up their needs and put up their availability and you could, you know, this office could serve as a kind of clearinghouse.
It has to be more sophisticated than a bulletin board, but yes, Mark.
Right, right, right.
Technology.
It would need to be staffed, but I think we, I mean, here we can already see that there could be matches made, people just haven't met each other, but they're meeting each other through you, so I'm suggesting that that might be a great function for your office among thousands of others.
We would think a very, very sophisticated tech world to do it, but yes, thank you. I agree. Anybody else who wants to add anything?
For anybody who, you know, got stage fright, didn't want to say what they wanted to say or had to leave earlier, weren't able to make it, for those on the web, please make sure to email office, I don't know if you have a particular...
Well, I wasn't planning to get up, but I figured I'd make a few comments. I'm Barry Donaldson with Barry Donaldson Architects and we are the architects and owners' representatives for the Episcopal Diocese of New York. We work with the diocese on properties from Manhattan all the way to Albany and I would like to point out that there are formal procedures that in the industry make it a lot easier to translate needs and requirements into a physical plan and program for development. One is a request for proposals procedure, which allows the church to articulate its mission and translate that mission into a program, a very formal program and space description that enables developers to provide that church a very rational approach to how to develop the property. It also enables the church a way to evaluate and benchmark the kinds of things that they're getting back from developers to know that they're going to meet their mission. So I would say that if you, you know, work with a good legal team, work with a good design team, architectural and planning, it allows you to get good contractors in place so that you can get a good job at the end of the day, but anyway.
And how do we get the affordable housing to go along with the good contractors and the good engineers?
Actually, every project that we're working on, and we've got about 15 projects at the moment, are all affordable housing projects. Some of them involve, well, right at the beginning, when we prepare the request for proposals, in that RFP, we say to the developer, "We want an affordable component." We define what we want the developers to give us so that it rationalizes the whole process much better.
I'm always meeting with the Episcopal bishops. I'll tell them you said that, ha, ha, ha. Anybody else? I want to thank you and I want to keep you longer. We'll be here for a while. If you have any questions, send in any suggestions. This is a process, we're going to make it as real as we can so that there are specific suggestions and that you have not wasted your time by being here tonight. Thank you very, very much.